That I attended the regimental review of the Corps of Cadets at the Coast Guard Academy on Saturday, representing the Town of Groton. It was an extreme honor and it was probably the experience of a lifetime. It was just a whole lot of fun and just a real pleasure to be a part of that.
Excellent. Diane?
I just received many emails, and I'm sure we all did, in support of the Noack Gardens.
Very good. Bonnie?
I went to the Schenectady Golf Meeting last night, and nothing major to report except for their marketing person took another job. And since there's a freeze, they can't fill it. And I just went over to the library and there was the -- sorry. Women lead the voters and Representative Conley and Skullcheck was over there. Yeah, it was a pretty good turnout, so that's all I have to report.
Very good. Harry?
Everybody's saying something, I might as well too, you know. I just want to report that I have been meeting with the Chair of the Parking Recs Commission. I've met with our Mark Berry, our Director, and it's about a potential Little League Tournament that might or might not be held in Groton. And I will report back once I get all my information together.
Good. Thanks, Harry. Rich?
Yeah, I had a meeting with the Representatives from EB concerning the Groton sale, and we discussed the activities which is going to take place between the Groton Memorial Committee and EB.
Very good. Very good. Thanks, everybody. If you want to move a minute?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes eight to zero to zero. Does anybody have any unfinished business? All right. Then we will move on to new business, and the first item is 2015-0178, the Noack School Public Garden Task Force Semiannual Report. I think there's several people in the audience here representing the Noack Gardens. And Clint, will you be coming up to present? So why don't you come on up and anybody else you'd like to bring?
My name is Clint Wright, and I live at 24 Westview Avenue in Noack. Good evening to the Town Council, to all of our neighbors. Mayor Flax, it's a pleasure. The -- trying to keep this simple, I ask the council members not to pre-read because I enjoy reading. As the 2017 growing season winds into autumn, we approach turning point in this project. The first two years granted by the Town of Groton have been used to develop the vegetable growing, garden growing area. Twenty-three of 27 garden plots were rented this year, and 10 raised beds were constructed by the Eastern Connecticut Community Garden Association, which are being used to provide produce for donation. Seventeen trees have also been planted, including pear and apple trees. All of these trees have been generously donated by people from our Groton community. Many of these trees have been planted in honor of lost loved ones. The mowing and maintenance of the property has settled into a comfortable arrangement shared by the Groton Parks and Recreation and the garden members. We have had a 95 percent survival rate on the Christmas tree project, and several of these trees have been moved in order to navigate that area more easily with mowers. Because of the training exercises conducted by the Noack Fire Department, the trees have been provided with plenty of water, and the growth of the trees has made them much easier to spot by our mowers. Members of the Fire District's Executive Committee support the gardens, and the Noack Fire Department regularly uses the property for fireman training and would like to continue to do so. During the school year of 2003 on September 12th, Noack Elementary School suffered the loss of John Turco, who was a young teacher at the school. Coincidentally, that was 13 years ago today. The students and staff of the school raised money for a black granite bench in his memory. When the school building was dismantled, the bench was moved to Northeast Academy in Mystic. Through the efforts of our neighbors, the bench has been returned to Noack. The John Turco bench and an additional bench donated by local residents, Mr. and Mrs. Jim English, have become the focal point for a sitting garden located near the former entrance of the school building. Former Noack school teachers and neighbors have planted perennial shrubs around the garden, and we have plans to create flower beds between the shrubs. All of the progress made by the Noack School Public Gardens Task Force thus far has been accomplished by individuals with small donations. We have reached a point where larger individual donations are being offered, and established groups are offering help. With the help of volunteers from the Coogan Farm in Mystic and teaching staff from the Town of Groton, we are exploring ways to formally engage schools from the Groton school system in the food-growing process. Our goal is to use summer camp-type programs at Stone Acres and Terraferma as guidelines. These programs offer, offered on a for-profit basis, have deep waiting lists. The Eastern Connecticut Community Garden Association has offered its grant-generating capabilities to help develop specific projects in food distribution contacts. These types of programs require a higher level of organization and time commitment. As we enter the second phase of the garden project, we have engaged volunteer consultants in order to develop what we may call a business plan, to formulate a more clearly defined vision of what the project may look like in five years or 15 years. In order to respond positively to the offerings and opportunities now being presented to the task force, we would like to request a renewed commitment for a four-year time period from the Groton Town Council. This will allow us to pursue our wish for further outreach to the Groton community and encourage more substantial financial and volunteer commitments. Many of our supporters and volunteers are here tonight, even though they will not be able to offer a public commentary until the next Town Council meeting on October 3rd. However, our volunteer business plan Brian Consultant, Brian Walter, will complete our report with a summary of future plans we're very enthusiastic about. Thank you for all your support to date. It has meant a lot to all of our efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, good evening. My name is Brian Walter. I want to first thank Clint for all of his support. We also have some electronic copy if you would like. I've been coming up from this area since 2005, my wife and I, Marie, have owned property up here. Three years ago, made the decision -- Mr. Mayor, nice to meet you. To make this our permanent residence. We truly, truly fell in love with the Groton community and Groton area.
Not nice to meet me.
Always nice to meet you. How are you today?
Thank you.
So I stand here first and foremost as a member of the community. Secondly, as Clint had mentioned, as a practicing management consultant, more years than I care to admit, so I won't admit, and as a member of a number of philanthropic boards, probably most relevant to this group here would be the Salvation Army over in New London. And I work with that board on a regular basis to oversee fundraising activities, food pantry activities, and what other elements that are applicable to my skill set. What you have in front of you today is a business plan framework for Phase Two. Certainly having had the pleasure and the opportunity to observe what's happened in Phase One, I think there's been a tremendous accomplishment from watching the school come down, and our property happens to be over on Prospect Hill, so we had a, pretty much a front row seat to what has been developed and what has been done and what's been established. And what you see in front of you today is a framework for a business plan for the next set of activities between a three and a five-year period. It's to serve the greater Groton community. It's to be focused on families and children, on individuals that are considered at risk and disadvantaged. There's really three themes that we are focused on, and those are education, recreation, and donation. And we intend to do this in collaboration with the established organizations that have already been in place and been practicing these models for years and have proven very successful. We look to emulate, we look to learn from, we look to draw upon, we look to work with those folks. From a recreation perspective, we look forward to collaborating extensively with the Groton Parks and Recreation Organization. I have two young children. When they grew up, I took personal involvement in their personal interests, as any of you who are parents probably have done. One of the things that always frustrated myself was the lack of facilities and the lack of preparation for children to enter into competition. This is one of the areas that we see as an opportunity for this facility to provide. In the area of education, Clint cited a couple of really, really good examples around gardening and learning. And gardening teaches us more than just lessons in horticulture. There are a lot of life lessons in there, there are a lot of interest in there, and a lot of great things to come about it. I personally know a number of folks that are on the board at Stone Farms, and as Clint said, that is a for-profit activity set. You know, people put a lot of money into this in belief that there is good to come out of it, both commercially and for the community, and they've got a great teaching model. I don't know if Clint had mentioned this or not, but they have a teach-and-learn garden that they've yet even to launch, and it's fully subscribed, fully sold out. And what that says to me is that there is a wonderful opportunity there and a wonderful interest there in the area of education, around gardening, around outdoor activities. And the last is donation. So donation comes in a number of forms. It comes in in time and volunteerism, and the areas that we've looked into have experienced tremendous success in that, whether it be through the ECCGA or Coogan Gardens or other areas. What happens is quite interesting. Supply actually outstrips demand, and those donations come in the form of volunteerism for fundraising, for education, for spending time with the youth, to give them opportunities that they don't necessarily have. It also comes in the form of give-back. Coogan Farms last year gave 13,000 pounds of food back to the local community, to the needy, right, to the what you call the food disadvantaged. There's an opportunity here to do that. My involvement with the Salvation Army, they have a food bank that's open three days a week and three days a week, and that is heavily trafficked. There is a need for that, there's a goodness that comes out of that, and there's a lot of life lessons that are learned out of that. As a consultant, we often joke that a lot of what we do is just a retread of somebody else's work. And one of the first things I do when I get a presentation from somebody is I look at the file properties to see who actually created it, because nine times out of 10, it wasn't that person. And my point in that is that there's models out there that we can take advantage of and intend to take advantage of. Coogan Farms and some of the other local farms have terrific models. The ECCG has terrific models out there that we can borrow from. The rec and parks organizations have terrific models that we can borrow from. As I said, it's high level, it's three to five years. We are more than happy to get behind the statistics on this. Between recreation, donation, and education, we feel that this has an opportunity to impact 1,000-plus individuals in a very positive way through the years, right, and present and allow individuals access to things that today they just don't have access to. It's not that this group here has not done an adequate job, it's an opportunity to take advantage of a wonderful open space which this particular area, I think, could use, quite frankly. Down at the bottom, just to finish orientating you to the chart, just a high-level number, right, and how I got to that 1,000 individual impact. Personally, given what I've done for decades now, I think that number's quite bigger to do a bottoms-up estimate, but it's simply just straightforward math. I will. You're welcome. And I'll repeat it all afterwards. So, we've built in a model there for the recreation aspect as well as the education aspect. In what I do for a living, there's always two parts. There's really putting together kind of what the vision is, and then there's showing the vision itself. Very, I think, blessed and excited to have Charles Lonza with us today, who also is a recent member of the community. Charles and his wife have been coming up with my wife and myself since 2005, and much to our pleasure, Charlie decided to make this his permanent residence upon retirement. Charlie's been at this a lot longer. One of the things that still amazes me, and some of you here are old enough to remember it, Charlie was one of the original draftsmen for the Luna Rover. Part of Charlie's job through his career has been to create the vision, to illustrate the vision, to show what the arts are possible. So I'm going to ask Charlie to share with you, really, what he's taken and translated from what you have in front of you, from a piece-of-paper perspective, to what the vision is for the property, for the community. How we see it folding out, where we see it laying out, and again, from a timing perspective, what we would accomplish over the next three to five years.
Sure.
Take a paper copy for the gentleman. Better grab a couple from Clint. At least two more. Again, we'll make copies of these available in electronic format, and if you prefer paper, if you let Clint know, he will be more than happy to reach out to us and we'll get those to you.
So what I've done here is I thought it would be good to show what's been accomplished already and then what the future ideas that we have. So everything in yellow is already completed, and then the things in purple are future ideas. And it could just brainstorming ideas at this point, but I think the opportunity could be great, could be big. And when you get all that creative people involved, this'll grow. So. What we've done is, we think we could fit a small baseball field for like midget, little kids, you know, little young kids, and the same thing with soccer. You've got big soccer fields with very young children. We thought this would be a better place for them, instead of trying to compete with the older kids. You know, they can learn the sports here and then participate in bigger things. And bigger things later. And part of that idea was to create this little pole barn where we can actually have classes where, you know, it could be just about anything from basket weaving to you name it, could be done there. You know, it depends on the input you might get from schools or whatever. But the playground, we think, could be really improved and better utilized. Right now, there's just the part that's in yellow there, but we think if we add swings and a slide, it would give it a bigger bang. And then Clint was telling me that kids come in the wintertime, young kids, and they sleigh ride on the little hill there. So we were like, that's a good idea, and then why not have a skating, ice skating rink there for kids? So like I said, this is just the start of ideas for future.
Thank you. Concepts? Bonnie?
Have you talked to the people at Ledge Light and their new programs that they're having with farmers markets in Groton City, in New London, and surrounding areas?
We have only gotten to the point where we are preparing to become involved in that. Up till now, it's been digging and building fences and getting the project off the ground. You know, a year and a half, two years ago, we didn't even know what kind of dirt we had up there. We had a soil sample or soil test, but we hadn't driven a car yet. So we wanted to get a group of, get the garden going. Once it got's going, we have, we've become much more affiliated with the Connecticut Garden, Community Garden Association, and they're helping us guiding through local soup kitchens and things like that. And then there's always the United Way that we can fall back on. We're just getting the volunteer effort to do the legwork on that, the digging and stuff.
And then for these small fields, have you talked to Mark Berry about whether that would be useful for the Parks and Rec program?
I haven't talked to Mark Berry, but I'm certain that it would be useful. The, I mean, I don't have stats for you, but there's a lot of people in Groton that don't have enough to eat, don't have the proper things to eat. Typically, groups of people or individuals who don't have access to automobiles, et cetera, tend to carry bags of lightweight things, which is packaged food. Grocery bag full of vegetables weighs a ton. So the less affluent part of our society tends to go for popcorn and carry a lot of it, and that's the niche that we're going to try to fill. There are parts of town that are targets that we have and groups that help fill that void. So that's where we're going now.
I think in that area, just to drive that point home, ideal outlets for that are areas that are near mass transit, right? The needy typically will use mass transit. Having it convenient allows them to take elements of weight more than popcorn, right, meaningful things, and make a trip. Because again, the folks that typically need this don't have the luxury of an automobile. At best, they've got the luxury of a ride from a friend or to show up at a delivery truck or to take mass transit.
Great.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's good to see a really structured approach to bring this Phase Two into play, because I think you really need some talent and a real effort to bring it out to the whole community like you're trying to do here. So I think you've got a lot of good ideas. Any idea on how much money and/or volunteers it would take to, you know, get to this point in the end game?
So we're in the process of doing a bottoms-up estimation, and hence the reason that we called it a framework. We feel comfortable that there certainly is enough interested parties and volunteers in the area to participate. The main barometer that I've used for that is the folks that I've known that have been involved in some of the boards that I'm on. They go out and seek donations and seek volunteerism, as well as looking at, you know, working models for certain elements of that. So, you know, we brought up Stone Farms before. I've looked at their plans, looked at their models. Again, they're for-profit, which to me is, in some, is harder to execute on than a non-for-profit. And they've got, you know, an area where they're oversubscribed, right, which says to me that there's tremendous interest, right? And where there's interest in that, there's also interest in participation.
Harry, and then Rich?
Yeah, I have a ton of questions. There's so much for me to get, to get around. And while we were talking, I looked up, because I was embarrassed, with Coogan, Eastern Connecticut Community Garden Association. I didn't know that, I left it up on my phone while you were talking.
You cheated. You cheated.
Well, I wasn't texting somebody, I really was doing work. And, you know, I expected tonight you guys to come in. I mean, this is a lot more than I expected. I expect, you know, we grew 50 pounds of carrots, we planted some trees and that kind of thing. This is a lot, some of the things on here really got my attention. What do you have in mind when you say children at risk and disadvantaged? You're talking about children that are more on the poverty scale, or you're talking about children with special needs? Because we have programs for that that would fit very well with this, with Island Chikaze and our Park and Recs program. And by the way, they split the soccer fields in half for the little kids now at Paquana Place, because my kids had to do that. That's what they do. It would be good to have them, they wouldn't get hurt, they would be away from the bigger kids.
Use as an example, my daughter started a nonprofit in San Francisco where the Navy Yard was, and that's the most impoverished area. And she got young school kids that live in the area to become involved, and they changed that whole neighborhood from food to getting the power plant shut down. Kids are just, they love being involved in things. You just have to get the things for them to grab onto, you know.
It reminds me of the movie Whoopi Goldberg was in there a long time ago. I don't know if you've seen that, but. So I mean, this is just a lot to get, I mean, there'd have to be interaction with our Park and Recs. It's Councilor North has said, our Park and Recs people, it's actually pretty exciting, being interested to see where it's going to go. So disadvantaged, that's the question that I asked. What do you have, what is your definition of that? And I'm coming from somebody that has a soft spot in my heart with people with special needs.
Sure.
So just to warn you, that's just word. I'm coming from.
That's fine. That's part of the reason I do what I do, you know, with my spare time and the boards, right? And the definition can range from a child in a single-parent home, right, that can be living in any one of the ZIP codes that we live in in this room here, right, to a child or family that's not sitting in any of these ZIP codes, right, and has no chance, right? I mean, disadvantaged is someone that wants to, in their heart of hearts, you know, do something, do something that's good, but isn't given the advantage of that.
Yeah, I can see inner-city kids visiting to get some fresh air and do whatever, you know, so.
Sure. And those, and it's not to take and take a dark brush and paint, you know, paint an image with a dark brush, but, you know, unless they're helped along the way, and I've done tremendous amounts of studies on these, you know, in service of other organizations, you know, those are the ones that end up on the wrong path, right? And when they're on the wrong path, it's sad, because no one wants to see a child take that path. Economically, it's a burden to the, you know, to the community, because the path that they typically end up on is not one that doesn't get addressed without education or the health system or, you know, the penal system, right? And you take one or two kids that are disadvantaged, and you turn their life around, it's amazing how influential they can be on their peers. And that's, you know, the advantaged kids pretty much have what they should have. They may not have everything that they need, but even though we're blessed to live in this area, there's a tremendous amount of individuals that don't have access to playing fields, couldn't even learn the game of soccer if they wanted to learn it, or lacrosse. or lacrosse, or baseball, right? And then, you know, when their age comes to go and play and they go to school, they're too embarrassed to take a shot at it, right? Or food, and gardening. I mean, how many kids come into your kitchen and say, what are you making? Can I help? Our kids were tremendously curious about that.
Thank you. Rich?
I remember originally... This was a garden organization. And I guess this year, you must have reached out into the sports area and to help the children and so forth. How many children are there now in the program?
The items that we're presenting as far as the Phase Two of the project are things that will have to be ratified by the task force and the town council. What we're doing is we're describing to everyone the steps that we would like to take now that we've got something going on up there. So we're not going to go up there with machinery and start planning off playing fields and things until it's been discussed and ratified, both by the task force and... So it's not as if we have 30 kids up there waiting for us to build the field. We're going to put the honey out, and we're going to, we'll attract them in. And that's why we want to associate with the Board of Education to network into the school system, both for the gardening aspect of it and for the recreational aspect of it.
I think it's admirable, but, you know, originally, it was for gardening, trees, vegetables, flowers, and that type of thing. And I'd like to hear tonight what your plans are in that area. If it's a Phase One or before the Phase Two project. You're asking for four years of, an additional four years, which I think, you know, that would be a very favorable thing, but tell us about the gardening part.
Well, the four years and the gardening part have to do with the fact that we have people who are ready to go in developing programs through the school system, which means transporting kids, preparing areas for the kids, developing a curriculum, all the cerebral legwork that goes into a curricula-based activity. And I think that we can probably get that program going this winter, implement it in the spring. But we don't want to do a one-shot deal. We want to develop a program, not just try and experiment out. You know, this is one of those things that it'll start with a bunch of kids, and then it'll be a bunch more kids. And then, it's a developing program that we would like to begin. The playing fields and those sort of things are items that we're just discussing. Like I say, we haven't voted on anything. We haven't really laid anything out. We'll probably get Brian Kent or somebody, a real landscape architect, to come up here and measure it out and that sort of thing. So what we're doing is we're asking you for time to develop these programs. Not to turn the switch on tomorrow morning. We want to know that we can do this and promise people that it's going to be there next week. And not have them go, well, jeez, you know, we've put all this effort into developing this program, and now it's gone.
I think from the hard numbers perspective, setting it up during the winter months or the garden downtime months, right? You know, and opening expectation from kids being involved in the farms is somewhere in the neighborhood of 150 that would be able to be accommodated. It's a very symbiotic environment as well. If any of you have ever coached young kids in sports, particularly when you get in the, you know, five-year-old, six-year-old range, you know you're in competition with their attention span to a lot of things around them. And that's a good thing, right? Because, you know, each of the potentials up there offer an opportunity to expose an individual to something else. It's not that the organization has deviated from its original mandate, its original plan, to take advantage of the area and create a garden, right? And create a garden that does a number of things along the lines of education and donation and sustenance. But it's got additional potential that probably fills some flat spots that exist here in our own community. The worst thing that could happen is three years from now, this group get together and say, there's so much demand that all 27 acres needs to be hoop houses and raised beds and gardens, and then things need to happen year-round. And that's not such a bad thing. You know, in the meantime, if the community goes served, has choices, has options, that's also not such a bad thing.
Karen and Diane?
I just wanted to say that I'm very impressed with what I'm seeing. Several years ago, when you first came to us with the proposal for the Noang Gardens, I'll be honest, I had my doubts that you would be able to pull it off. I've been pleasantly surprised. I'm very impressed with what I'm seeing. I like the vision that you have. And I think the thing that I like most about it is the fact that you obviously have the support of all of the residents within Noang. And that's very important when you go and try to create a project like this that's going to bring people in from outside of your little community. The fact that I received so many emails from people, residents of Noang, supporting it, asking us to make sure that we were there for you. I think this is wonderful, and I think that as you move forward, there are a whole lot of resources in the town that will only help to facilitate plans that you have. And I think eventually, you will become a very big part of what makes Groton a really great place to live. So, thank you.
I think it's a wonderful statement. One of the things, I mean, I've not been up here as long as Clint has, that drew us here was the thought of inclusion and the openness. And it is a big thing to be as open in sharing of a neighborhood as the folks behind us are. We lived in areas where people paid quite a bit of money to keep everybody out, and we've got a group in front of us that are interested in opening their hearts and opening their streets and their homes and their free time to do something for the greater good of the community. That's not a, at least in my world, I don't see that very often.
You're right.
And I think it's a pretty cool thing and a pretty special thing. And to flip it and put it back on your shoulders, it's a pretty cool thing to be a part of on your part.
Diane and then Bonnie?
I think Karen was reading my notes. I have to tell you, I was skeptical at first. I thought, another open space, if the town's going to have to mow, and that was going to be it. I love the challenges you're putting in front of yourself. I love that the community is getting together. It's huge. It teaches the children, more than anything, that this is what you do in life, is giving back. I love the direction you're going. I love the giving back in the food. I hope you maintain it. My question is, so when you come back in four years to ask for another four years, you're going to hope that this is pretty much going, that it's been implemented?
In less than four years, I would suspect it would be going and going strong. And I would suspect during that period of time, you'd get an ongoing report on progress to plan and how we're doing. And I would hope that if we needed help and guidance from areas of the community that has practiced this for decades, we could reach out, right? And to me, again, in doing what I'm doing for a living, sometimes you have to swallow your pride and ask, you know, how'd you do that? But that's the quickest way to get to success, right?
I have to say kudos. Good job.
If I could make one final comment. The last two comments from the town council had to do with initial skepticism and how it's visible that this engine is beginning to run now. I think that applies to Mr. Marasic's question as to when are we going to see this? Because I think, once you get it rolling, it's going to go rolling. And by rolling, I mean, we've involved, just in the last year, far more many people than we had initially. And the character of the project has subtly changed. So, give us another couple of days, and we'll have a whole lot of fun up there.
Thank you.
So, my question is about implementation. Because I thought the last time that you came in, you were going to start the program with the high school students. Isn't that what you called us?
We suffered the loss of Ernie Kochmeyer. Because Ernie Kochmeyer was our liaison to both Fitch Senior High School and Elagroso Tech.
Oh, he was the one setting up the program?
But his job description has been modified to the point where he just couldn't give us the time.
So you have somebody to take over for him?
There's no other Ernie Kochmeyer. But we do have another candidate who has been part of the Groton school system for a number of years. And we're hoping that she can get us in the door.
Okay. And I do think this is a good vision if you focus on it and get it implemented. But I really, you know, we have, I wasn't in council when this was given over to be a garden, but it's taxes that are coming into the town. And as you know, we're in a terrible budget crisis this year. And, you know, not getting any revenue from this property is not good. You know, if we could have revenue for it. This is a good idea, and giving back food, I think, is a great idea, donating food. But I would definitely want food that's donated to stay in Groton. And whether it's at the Groton City Farmers Market or at our food pantry, because the town of Groton residents are paying for this garden.
Absolutely. And do you, as a councilor committee, have, you know, visibility and prioritization into those organizations? Right? Every one of them say, yes, thank you, we'll accept, right? But again, having done this firsthand, I've walked into food pantries and opened the door and gone, oh my God. You know, it's like I'm standing in Walmart. You know, they're never going to go through this food, right? So, the question is, is, you know, does that exist? And if it does, we would love, you know, your input and your help in saying, here are the most needy areas of the community.
Yeah, you can contact Cindy Barry over at Ledge Light.
So Dean and then Greg?
I was here at the council, I can't remember the years. I bop on and off the council. You probably all know that. I was here when the initial group came and said, we'd like to use the space that we frankly weren't doing anything with, hadn't decided what to do with, and said, we have this idea. And I think it's the nature of the thing where there were a lot of ideas, and I think it was a given that there was no concrete plan, per se, except to use the land and hope that in the future, and I understand it would take time for everything to kind of gel. And I'm heartened when I see something like this, a framework like this. And what this does is two things. One, it provides a structure that you, I'm not going to say you were lacking. And visions change, but I think the heart's always been there. It provides that, provides a structure. It also answers the question you hear sometimes, and there's no, folks are not stranger to the other side of the argument. It's been brought up once in a while, couldn't this land be put to some other use? There was one other critique I recall, which was, well, this is a piece of property in Noang, and the people in Noang are going to get to use it, and let's not kid ourselves, that those are the only people who are really going to get any enjoyment out of it. This provides a framework, as I understand it, to make it a community thing, which is frankly, because of the particular nature of the communities within Groton, it just so happens that people think Mystic First, Noang First, City of Groton First, GLP First, Paquonic Beach First, that's what they think of, and Groton's not aluminum that. And this is a way to sort of say, no, we are actually connected. There is a town of Groton, Groton residents, and this is a project for Groton. It has to be located in Noang, the way other pieces of property are located in their particular neighborhoods. So I like that aspect of it. This is, I was thinking about something else as well. You know, we're always talking about outsourcing. You know, isn't there another way to, you know, skin the proverbial cat? Well, we have a Parks and Rec department, and we've got programs. Well, what you're proposing, even though it's on town land, what you're proposing is basically supplementing, in a way. You're supplementing what our Parks and Rec program does. We've got a room full of volunteers, people who are willing to help on this thing, that as far as I know, requires us to supply you with water that I guess you pay for at some point, and the land, and, I mean, what better outsourcing can you have? You're basically doing what otherwise the Parks and Rec department could be doing or won't do because of funding, and you're volunteering, so that's a good thing. And the last thing is this, this, you hear this all the time. Well, we own these acres. Couldn't you sell the acreage? Get a chunk of money, have somebody build something, let's assume that's possible, and then that property will generate taxes. Isn't that a good thing? Well, I'm sure before I got here, when I got here, when the garden idea was floated, and since then, there has never been a year where we've said, whoa, this town's got too much money. We're always in some sort of a crisis. We're always, it's always nice to have the money. But if you followed along that logic, we could take every bit of our open space and plow it under. That would all generate a lot of money, but we don't do that. Why don't we do that? We don't do that because even though you can't mathematically calculate, I can estimate the value of the land and the taxes it would throw off within a certain window, and that its value is an open space to the town. You don't have numbers over here. Well, it's not valueless. It's also not of infinite value. We do have to be a little hard-nosed about it. But in the end, it comes down to this. The town isn't, although we struggle with the numbers all the time, the town isn't simply about finances. The town's about being a place. This is one of those things that makes it a place. And while I can't compare the value of the property in the open market to a developer and taxes and all that, as I sit here, I value this. Its value as an open space and what you can do with it more greatly than I do this. Because this is, I could plow under Paquonic Plains if I wanted to and generate taxes. But I don't, because I value it for what it is. And so I congratulate you for your work. I look forward to giving you another four years. And I've been very careless, and I'll stop now.
Thank you. Greg?
Again, I echo everybody's kudos. But mine's a business question. Should we reexamine our initial agreement that we struck with this task force? Just because I think the scope has changed. I don't know if the language or the agreement needs some tweaking and light at liability and insurance issues that might come up for things that we're planning here in the future.
The agreement that we made with the town was born out of a meeting with the town manager and the town attorney. We tossed around ideas like leasing the property, other options like that. Most of the things that we discussed were so cumbersome, for both parties, that the town manager and the town attorney suggested that we enter in the memorandum of understanding and become part of the town as a task force. By doing that, the town does retain ownership. We get a certain amount of democratic freedom, but we're still answerable to the town council. And like I say, we can go back and talk to the town attorney. They seemed to think that was the best option, and I agreed with it. And it seems to be a fairly comfortable arrangement to share the property.
I'd like to make a motion that we renew the four-year contract or commitment to the Noang Garden Club for the next four years.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
What was the original term?
Two.
Two. I have a, I just got a question before we get into discussion. I have a, I just got a question before we, before discussion. As you guys know, I've been tied to the Noank school property for quite a long time, I was on the task force, they had a recommendation to do whatever it was we were going to do. And, you know, I think it's great that you identified a use for the property that's townwide, I think it's very important. And I, I also, I, I, I know that you, I know that Noank is like a, a community that, that will come together and get things done, and, you know, and I look at, I just look at like the tennis courts, which I just played on, which were perfect, like, they're, they're really nice, they were clearly just redone, and I'm sure that I think Noank probably, I'm guessing Noank paid for that, not, not the town, but I could be wrong. I don't know who paid for it. Anyway, my point is, is that I think everything that you, you brought to the table is great, I think that you're growing on your original idea. I also think we can't lose sight of a plan and a viable plan, and there's a lot, clearly there's a lot of work that needs to be done, because, you know, we, we've all experienced, you know, consultants coming in here and telling us about fields and what we need and the cost of those fields, and they're, and it's very cost prohibitive. You know, if you put in a, you know, just a field alone, if you put in a, a fake field as opposed to grass, there's pros and cons, and it costs a lot of money. But if you put in a fake field, you can, you can play, play it on all day and get an unlimited amount of hours out of it, except for the sunlight, to play on it. So, I'm excited by what you guys have brought to the table, and I'd like to figure out how we move forward, for lack of a better word, hand in hand, because, you know, like you were saying, you need the council's support, and I think you're going to need some support and some, and I think from the town manager's standpoint, some of the knowledge that the town employees and directors have, and getting you into some of the doors that you're going to need to get into in order to make things happen. I know, I see GOSAs here, I think GOSA is a great partner to have help, it's open space, and they're very, you know, they're very weathered at, at, at raising money and helping with that kind of thing. And I think also to the point to realize that, I can't speak for all the taxpayers, but I'm assuming they're not going to want to fit the bill. You know, they're going to, they're going to want to have money raised and, and have plans go forward. So, I'm not sure about, the motion from Bonnie, I don't know, and I'd ask John, like, do we, if we make a motion to go forward with another four years, that opens the door for another agreement to be written? We wouldn't, right, is that how it would work?
The motion right now is to renew the existing, however, I'm going to find a copy of that and just see if there's any issues, and I could bring it to the council next time if I saw any problem with that. I haven't seen a copy of it, so I can't speak offhand.
Sean, would you agree, I mean, we need to, you know, we want to, you want to make sure that we're on board, we want to make sure that the things that you guys are committing to have, you know, they, they have steps and they move forward in a, in a timely manner, and we get to police each other, you know?
Sure.
I think we need a, we need a measured runway, right? But it needs to be long enough to get the, you know, to get wind under the wings and get the plane off the aircraft carrier, so to speak, so it doesn't dribble off into the ocean. And, you know, when you look at this, to me, two years kind of gets you partially pregnant, right? Where you're, you know, you're semi there, but you're not quite there. So, my two cents, right, as, as a newbie, right, but a, you know, a member of the community is, while a tremendous amount has been accomplished in two years, you know, a three to five-year plan gives us something that, that we can measure, we can, you know, manage, you know, you can't manage what you don't measure, or can't measure, and can set nice milestones. But know that, that, you know, by the time we get to the end of that runway, we've got enough wind under our wings and we're going to take off, and we're going to do very, very well.
So it sounds to me like we can, we can, we don't want to, I don't know Bonnie, if you would agree, we don't want to hands down just renew what we have, we want to make sure that there's, because it may play everybody, so we can have John and, and you guys talk and, and get the attorneys involved when we need to, to make sure that we move forward and have something that we all can be happy about. I also just want to say, I know, you know, I know when you guys first came to us, I think it was Bob Palm who was leading the charge, and, you know, he is, he is not here anymore in, in the area. And Clint, I know that you're, you took the leadership role, and it probably, you probably didn't want to, I'm guessing, but, and I appreciate that, you get a lot of passion for what you do, and I, I appreciate that, and I think the people here do too, so, thank So we have a motion and a second. I would, you know, we're not, I don't think we're, we, we want to just renew the two year to make it a four year, so, now you want to, what the thoughts here are.
I amend the motion to agree to have the town manager and the task force look into making any changes, and our town attorney, making any changes to agree to a four-year renewal after any changes were adjudicated. Something to that.
Second amendment.
We have a motion and a second to amend. Is there any discussion on that?
I want to be clear, what is your, you're moving, so, I mean, they were asking for a commitment for four years, I understand that can be a little...
Still doing four.
Right, still doing four, right. So you're, basically you're sort of fine tuning it.
Right, allowing the town attorneys, the town manager, and the task force to get together to look at the agreement, see if there's any adjustments that need made prior to committing to another four years.
I would have presumed that that was already done anyway, but I'll, I'll go with the amendment.
Any further discussion? I mean, I mean, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, extensions? That passes eight to zero to zero, then we will vote on the motion as amended. Is there any further discussion in that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? That too passes eight to zero to zero.
So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Just, I want to make sure, if I'm leaving here with a big homework assignment or no work at all, it feels like we're going to, to move forward and flesh this out more, and obviously there's discussions that need to take place and, and other items, but folks are fairly favorable.
Yes, the, the original memorandum of understanding, there was time periods where
you'd come back to us and let us know, and I don't, I'm, I'm assuming there's going to be part of that, and you're going to come back in whatever time period it is and tell us how great you're really doing, so, I'm assuming that's going to be part of it too.
I would hope we're telling everyone how great we're all doing. Right? I mean, it's a, you know, this is a team sport that we're all participating in, but absolutely.
All right. John, you're good? Okay? Thank you, thank you.
You're going to take two minutes, or we'll hold Jen, start on. Want to take, take two minutes?
Move on to 2017-0202, but we're postponing that to a new date. There's been a request to postpone to a new date, so we will not be doing 2017-0202, we'll move on to 2017-0207, scheduling of a public hearing on charter revision, commission, draft report. So, with the, the charter revision commission has given us their, their draft copy, and we need to, we need to set a public hearing. And it would be a special meeting October 3rd? Does that, does that sound right?
We have to have a special council meeting next week to approve the resolution.
Oh, okay.
Why don't we do that tonight?
I mean, do, suspend the rules?
You could recommend it, but you have to, you have to adopt that resolution prior to the public hearing, so that means having a special meeting next week.
Okay.
Because you're not going to have another meeting until October 3rd for a regular meeting.
So then, so if we establish a date tonight, couldn't we have a special council meeting next Tuesday?
That's what it says. I have to see if there's any rule. Does anybody know if there's any kind of posting requirement for that public hearing?
Yeah, it's normal, normal.
Okay, so, as long as they...
Three days, five days.
Okay. I guess as long as we get it in the paper.
Well, we can, I mean, we certainly could, we, we have to recommend changes within 15 days of the public hearing.
Except for you'd be taking action on that resolution to have it on the same day as the public hearing for next week. I don't know if, you, you know...
Well, today's the 12th, and the public hearing's the 3rd, so we're looking at the 19th, 26th.
19th, you would pass the resolution, so you wouldn't have the public hearing on the 19th, because you're going to pass the resolution to have it sent.
Right.
You could do it then, I would think you could do it, yeah, the next...
But we're looking, I think we're looking at October, have it October 3rd.
Yeah.
That's the next schedule.
So if, if we set the date tonight, approve it at a special meeting next week, and then that gives us two weeks. Harry, you know this stuff.
Well, I mean, when do we have to formally pass? We could have had a special town council meeting right after this, we could have picked the time and stopped and done it. Could have done it tonight, but we didn't post the meeting, so we can't do that.
Right.
But is there any reason we couldn't do it, have a special meeting before our committee of the whole on 26th? Because it's just to pass one quick thing, is it?
I would think that would be fine.
Now, we, we don't have to have a meeting, I'm fighting to not have a meeting next week, just for one thing, so...
So we'll, we'll pass tonight to have it on October 3rd and confirm that we'll be able to, to have a special meeting on the 26th to confirm it, but we'll move forward with having the meeting on that date. Does that sound right to everybody?
You lost me.
So we're going to, there's no meeting next week, so on the, on the 26th, we will have a special meeting before our COW.
At 5:30, you think?
At 5:30 to approve this, to approve the date of October 3rd. And between now and then, we can get every, the postings ready and have everything set to go, and assuming that we, that everything's kosher, we can...
I think it would be. I'll double check, though.
Does that make sense?
Then, then we will have the public hearing on October 3rd.
October 3rd, yeah. Harry?
I would, I would think that if the town manager looks and sees the 26th, isn't good for us to have that 5:30 meeting that we're going to all have to live with next week, having a special meeting?
I'll find out right away.
And six of us have to be here, that's all.
Right.
Well, it doesn't have to be a Tuesday either.
Right. Yeah.
Go ahead, Bonnie. And Karen.
So, is there any way we can hold this sooner? Is there any way to get it on the ballot, on the referendum? I mean, I'd have another special meeting tomorrow.
I, I think from, if you look at the, the timeline that they provided, that there's no way to get it onto a November, onto this fall.
No, we can't.
Yeah, it can't be done.
Okay. It can't be.
It's a legal question, I can do this one. Can you package it up?
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, I, you know, John wants to do it, it's fine.
I don't have my, the timeline, I don't believe it can make it to November, I talked to Betsy earlier on it.
Well, I sure would be willing to have a special meeting tomorrow and the next day and get the public hearing as soon as possible, if it could be done.
I'll double check, I don't believe it can be. Okay. Karen?
I'm going to sound dense, but what I'm trying to figure out is, we had a public hearing when the charter revision released their report. They're, they're, okay, so we have to, and it'll be basically the exact same thing as they gave us, correct? But we have to have another public hearing now to, to go over the same thing?
Within 45 days of receiving the report from them.
Okay.
Yeah, because they could have made changes based upon their public hearing, I think that's why that process is laid out that way.
Okay.
You need a motion?
Yes, we need a motion.
I didn't see a suggested one in here, but, I mean, all I have to do is move that we hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 3rd. We don't have to talk about our, our other, the other meeting would just be to ratify that on the 26th. I'm going to move that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to have a public hearing on October 3rd. Any further discussion?
Just one question, is there a reason that in our packet that you recommended the special meeting to be the 19th?
Just because that was recommended to me, but there's no particular, just, you know, because Betsy, you know, tends to have those days open, but it certainly could be before, I'm sure it could be before the meeting on the 26th, I'll double check, but...
You just don't want us to have a night off.
The packet's recommended October 3rd. My packet does.
No, the special meeting.
The special meeting, the 19th is...
Has the 19th.
Oh, I see.
I know, I didn't know if there was a timeframe issue, that's why she's had the 19th down there.
Hi, Diane. Hi. You asked if there was any discussion, and I was putting my hand up. Okay. So if we figure out that we can get it on this year's election ballot, would October 3rd be too late for the public hearing?
Yeah, probably.
I think it's probably not going to make it no matter what in November, but I'll double check, but I can't say offhand. You know, you still, there's a question of, you can do the whole thing as, you're going to have discussions yourself, you can do it all as a lump, I, I don't know if we have to have any attorney review, but you can do it separately as pieces, questions, you know, they don't have to be one lump question, I think there's a lot of discussion yet to happen. So I think it'd be pretty hard to have it in November. I, I think we're beyond the timeline anyways, I think...
But it has to go to the state.
I think Betsy had to have it already set to go by now, so...
Great. Well, you can have a referendum outside of the normal November election, right?
May referendum.
Yes? There's no further discussion, it was in favor of October 3rd public hearing, so...
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? That passes eight to zero to zero.
What time is the meeting? The public hearing?
It would be, I, excuse me. Our, our normal meeting time is 7:30, so, I mean, it would be one of the first things on the agenda, I would assume, because that's usually the way we do things, so...
So, the, and is this, I'm looking at the agenda, John, and so, along with this public hearing set date, we're, we're open to talk about the charter, the charter revision as presented to us?
Say that again?
So, we, we asked that the charter revision commission be here, so that we can discuss the, what they presented to us, their, their draft.
They'd already presented it, so it's only if you had any follow-up questions at this point.
Yeah, we can do that, that, now we can do it right now.
Sure.
Right, okay. Do you guys want to come up to the...
Now?
Yeah, yeah. Have you, have you guys read over the, read it over?
I don't have it with me. I got the summary out in the car.
Thank you, guys, for coming tonight, thanks for all your work. I had a few questions, I don't know if anybody else has any questions. I was just, with regards to the, the draft that you guys gave, and, and there's a lot, there's a lot in here, there's a lot of changes, and I was reading the, the minority report and Bob's member statement, and you, like, it seems to me, I'm, I'm concerned that there's so much, as Bob had mentioned in his statement, that people are saying there's a lot in there, and, and it seems like there's big changes for everybody, and I'm just, I'm just wondering, like, and I'll give some examples, with regards to a referendum, that there's no kicker for referendum, there's no, there's no, you know, inter-reaches, two and a half percent, or if it gets, if it's a 2%, whatever it may be, that we've put, to me, and I haven't attended all your meetings, but it seems like everything but the kitchen sink is in, has been asked to be changed. And so, it concerns me that, that there's so many changes that it's going to have a hard time, you know, people don't like change, so, there's, you know, just trying to get an understanding of, of having read the draft and read all the intricacies of it, how, you know, why there was, why there was, yeah. Jen?
In regard to that question, initially, as, as a committee, when we were having that discussion, Bob and certain other people had wanted like a percentage, and then there were a group of us who didn't want a percentage. I was in that group. The thought is, if we had put like a 1%, 2%, 3%, whatever the number may be, that whoever's preparing the budget will always come in like a point or whatever lower. So it's actually giving whomever the free access and rein to automatically do an increase. So if we left it at zero, any increase would have to be justified or decrease, right? Obviously, no one's going to justify a decrease, but, so that was the rationale that the committee came up with, that at zero, everything needs to, you know, and as, if you're looking at the entire plan, it's more thought out that we're going to have meetings, town input, you know, community input. So hopefully, the plan that is brought up to the council from the town employees have already been looked at, reviewed, and I guess more thought, not that there's not any thought right now.
Okay.
Anyone else wants to jump in?
Yeah, Bonnie? Yeah, you know, there are some big changes, no question about it, but, you know, they would have been real big 15 years ago, 10 years ago they might have been big. Today, the notion of a budget referendum, you know, you've campaigned in this town before, you go door to door, and budget referendum is on the lips of a lot of people. So that's not a surprise, it's not a big thing to a lot of folks in town. And the elimination of the RTM, about the same. There's a lot of people, you know, there's some people don't know what the RTM is, there's plenty of people that do. But, so, I, those are not new, off the, off the wall suggestions in my mind, for my time in town. And I think, as Jen said, the whole thing, the whole package kind of hangs together, that, as I said in my piece, I think we've got the elements of government in the right place. And by having the budget referendum in the end, it is sort of a, you know, it's, it's kind of like the heartbreak hill you've got to get over in the budget process. You know, you know that it's there, and you've got to make it work. And Stonington, and Guilford, and Madison, and Clinton, Cromwell, and Newtown all do it, and they don't seem to have problems with it. So I think, I think it's a healthy way to exist in town, and I think it'll actually bring people together around issues. You know, if you're supporting public education, you can get behind that. If you're supporting public works, or public safety, or Parks and Rec, or whatever, you can get behind that and be an advocate for those, those issues. So I, I think you can say it's big, and people don't like change, but this is something that I think people are looking for. And I've talked to various residents around town, and they like it.
Bonnie?
I love change, and I want change in this town. We need structural changes, we need to change the way we're doing business, it's not working.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you, Bonnie. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm just, you want the Charter Vision Commission to be successful. I want them to be successful. I want, you know, if you're going to go for change, you want to, you want to be successful. And, and I'm looking at, at some of the things and just thinking out loud about, you know, where's the needle, and when does it go? You know, if you're, if you're a bell curve and you're heading up that hill, when are you, when are you doing too much and heading back down the hill? That's all. So, so Patrice, had her hand up first, and then Roseanne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for letting us be here tonight. I am the author of one of the Minority Reports, so you know where I stand on everything. I'm sure you've all read it many times, right? But my, something that someone said earlier, and I don't know if it was the town manager or one of, one of the counselors concerned me, and we spoke about this in our meetings, the idea that all the package changes that were recommended by everybody but me go together. If you try to separate it out, you could end up with a mess in town government. So you could strip this away, but then you're losing that part of it, right? So we had that discussion, and, you know, I'm, I'm totally opposed to this, but you need to take it as a whole, or else you could end up with a ridiculous government that's not going to work for anybody. So just keep in mind when you're, you're deciding how you're going to send it forth to the public, look at what you're doing and look at the components that you may like, you may not like. And we felt that we'd be better off leaving it just as a whole package and voting it all up. So that's one of the reasons why it's this big gigantic thing, because if you take away the RTM, but you don't do this, or you add that instead, you could create a Frankenstein's monster, so. Just be careful when you're, when you're doing your things.
Roseanne?
I didn't realize we were going to have this conversation tonight, so I didn't bring any notes. I just thought you were going to set the public hearing date. But one thing you might want to realize, and Bob's brought this up many times, is there's a lot of things that remain the same. We still remain a town council, town manager form of government. The town council is still elected at large, the board of ed still is elected at large, the town manager is still moves the budget through the process, and with the board of finance, we get more transparency, more oversight, and we actually have public input, and I have all my notes at home. And there's, there's workshops, public input, it's, the, the steps are very clear leading up to it, as I'm sure you've read in the minutes. But I have to agree with Bob, people want change. I think the budget process is broken. I don't want to say the whole town is broken, but the budget process is broken. And this is one way to fix it, with the board of finance, with the referendum, and maintaining the things that people seem to like. People seem to like the town manager form of government, they think it's efficient, they think it works, they like the town council, and so the things that work remain, but just the things that don't work are changed.
Okay. Thank you. Harry?
Except for term limits, I disagree with that one. But I, I agree with, with Roseanne. I got my stuff yesterday in the mail, I looked at the agenda, and it says, set a public hearing for the Charter Vision draft report, so I left all my stuff home, too.
Okay.
So I was, I mean, I assumed that we're going to have a public hearing, we're going to meet again, because we're getting input from the public, and, and we should meet again. And I want to say one more thing. I misspoke. It really was the proposed resolution at the back of the packet that I missed, and I, and I, I did it all right, and, but, but Roseanne, 7:30 is in the proposed resolution, so I apologize for that. Thank you.
So, hold on one second, Dean. So seeing as you guys weren't prepared, and I think there's.
She's prepared.
There's a little, maybe there's some miscommunication, I don't want to, we don't want to have a meeting on something and have it not be done appropriately. So we certainly can put it on the next COW. Hold on one second. And the next COW, and, and have a, another formal discussion. Maybe it's appropriate to have it after the public hearing and have it on the agenda for the COW that evening. But the dean had to say that first thing, right?
The one feature, and I, I've thought about the, the business of having a trigger, not having a trigger. The budget referendum in other towns that have a budget referendum do not always go swimmingly. Some towns, some towns have waves breaking on the rocks a couple of times. It, it's the nature of the beast. And I remember some years ago Stonington having like three goes at it before it was finally approved, and, so it, it does happen. The, the thing that I've noticed, the thing that I've heard from officials, because it is not a, you know, all unicorns and rainbows with a, with a budget referendum, is if a budget goes to the public, and they vote on a referendum, first of all, it's a spring election, so you're not going to have even the turnout. I don't know if you've found any different turnouts. The turnout at municipal elections is usually 35% or something like that, it's already poor. In a spring, in a spring referendum, which is when you'd have to have a budget referendum, do you have any read for what the turnout might be for something like that? So you don't have to answer that if you don't have the figure in front of you. That's one. And two, the, the common, I shouldn't say complaint, the critique of a, of a budget referendum, an annual budget referendum is, if you're the town officials and a referendum fails, how do you know what to do the next time, short of something general like, well, the public must have thought the budget was too rich, or raised taxes too much? What do you then do before you send it out for referendum number two?
We can answer that right now. The, the way we propose a referendum is, there's a, there's a question you answer, if you vote no, then you, then you check off, are you voting no because the budget's too high, or you're, or because the budget is too low?
Right.
So there is feedback.
All right. That, but in, in any given year, I would wager substantial money that if the voters turn a budget down, it's not because they thought the budget was too lean, it's because they thought the budget was too rich. So that question has some utility, but since 99 times out of 100, if it's voted down, it's going to be because the budget, we think, unless it's a hot button issue and the voters clearly, you know, there's something everybody's focused on, if it's just in general the voters voted down, I'll say 99 times out of 100 because the voters think it's too much money, based on a lot or little information, whatever their own critiques are when they go in the voting booth. And if you're the town officials, whether it's the manager, the board of finance, the council, okay, they've answered the question, yes, I think the budget's too high. Then what do we do? How much do we cut? Where do we cut? But there's no real policy guidance for it. So that's, that would be, that would, that's like a universal critique, not necessarily don't ever have a budget referendum, but it is, you know, a soft spot, if you will, a weakness of the system.
So Councilor Tibus, the turnout in budget referendums is much lower than what we get in a municipal turnout. So we were counting like 30% is usually what you get in a municipal turnout, and everything that, the numbers that we were looking at was coming in well below that, and we had people that were doing, Commissioner Frank had organized calling people from other towns, municipalities that had referendums, and she confirmed that. The other thing you got to look at, and I mentioned it here, is when the, when the referendums fail, and I put this in my report, the change that it comes back with, you know, of the districts that I sampled, the OLR document, the change in the final budget was between $5,800 and $28,000. And it's costing you $23,000 to have a referendum, to have one election. And you're getting that much of a change. No, it's cost, it's costing you five, so for $5,000, all right, you're going to have a referendum. So, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of data out there, and there's a lot of information compiled by the state, and we've, we've been at this for 15 months, and all of us, whether, you know, we agree, we disagree, we've, we've looked into all of these issues. So if you have questions, I would say, you know, do searchable minutes or something, and, and look up things in there, because we've had, we've had speakers, and reports, and, you know, we've, we've looked at a lot of information over the course of 15 months. We have done our due diligence.
Roseanne, anything, Kathy?
To answer, to try to answer Dean's question about what happens if the budget fails, and what will the town, where will the town know where to cut? In this proposal, there are workshops that lead up to it that include the public. In this proposal, there's the board of finance that works together with the town council, the board of ed, and the town manager. So hopefully, the whole process will give guidance to where they should either reduce or increase. And I think Councilor Morton had a, had a concern, well, what if they increase it? What if they vote it down because they want to spend more? What if we get, for example, a whole board of ed turnout who want to increase the budget rather than level fund it or whatever? So there are mechanisms in place so that the board of finance, the town council, the town manager will know where they should change the budget for the second time, if there is a second time.
The other question I had was, it's also tied to the referendum. I understand the argument that if you, if you were to put in a trigger, that it would effectively give the, the officials a license to spend just about up to. Without the trigger in place, it's not as though, flipping it the other way, it's not as though, I mean, if you can, you would come in with no increase over last year, either no budget, the budget's not any bigger, or the taxes aren't increased, or something like that. My hunches, having only been on the planet for half a century, you can keep that up for only so long before something gives. I don't know of any enterprise anywhere, public or private, where, where budgets have been kept level, where taxes have been kept level, you wind up with episodic decreases, usually some increases. The real question for taxpayers is, how much more am I going to get socked this year? Within a certain percentage, people are willing to tolerate it, because, you know, everything sort of goes up, it's just a question of how fast and how much. So since sooner or later, the officials are going to be crafting a budget that's going to go up anyway, better little bits than all, you know, one avalanche at one time, doesn't that make the, the argument that, well, if you put a trigger in there, you're giving a license to the officials? Doesn't that make it rather academic?
So?
So, I just want to make a statement before. I'm against a referendum, but when we were crafting the referendum, I thought 0% was the appropriate way to go. And in regards to your question, it's not that you're expecting the town to have a 0% increase year after year, it's allowing the town to have the increase but justifying that increase. So if it's going to be like a 2%, 3% increase, and it's, say, it's due to inflation regarding like whatever the salaries, which is probably like 80 to 90% of like a cost to a town, right, is that it's justified, so that, and people understand that, right? But you should also, as from an expense perspective, always look to find deficiencies. So if the town is hurting, sometimes you need to tighten your buckle a little bit, and you can't have that 2% increase. Or if you're going to have that 2% increase somewhere, something else has to give. So that's just the rationale for it.
This, this may be going too far, I'm, 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 I'm sorry, this may be going too far, but Massachusetts has had this 2.5 deal since 1981, and I'm curious now what their experience is. Do their towns see the officials saying, well, you know, anything over 2.5% goes to referendum, let's come in with a 2.4%? Do they act as though they have the license? I'm not saying you have the answer to it, but I'm just sort of bringing that out.
Kathy, did you want to say something?
Yeah, we're going back to the referendum.
You got the microphone?
Going back to the referendum and voter turnout, we did discuss that quite a bit as well, and some people were for a referendum and some weren't. My thought on that is that no matter how many people come out to vote, they want to say in how their money's spent, and it's going to be more than the 41 or 45, I've seen two different numbers, on how many people are on the RTM. So however many people turn out to vote, it's going to be more than what's the number of people on the RTM.
Great.
Interesting way to look at it.
Yeah, my question's on timing. Timing, you, you already held your public hearing and decided to go ahead and pass the, your resolution up to us without tweaking it at all. So is there a benefit for us deliberating on what we've been given and deciding on making any tweaks before we hold our public hearings to get additional feedback on what, what we think?
Yeah, no, I agree. I think that we would have the public hearing and then have the meeting happen, it could be the same night, but it would be.
No, my, my point is, we've already heard about the publics, and they didn't change anything. So I don't, the value of another public hearing until we deliberate and see if we want to make any tweaks ourselves, either to add things or take things out, and then have a public hearing based upon our decisions on what we want to push to referendum.
I agree with you.
I.
We're required to have the public hearing within 45 days of receiving the report, and I don't know what that does if you don't meet that timeline.
Can't change it, so we have.
Well, we just have to meet earlier and decide. Yeah, I mean, I.
I mean, I'm not sure what additional publics have come out and tell us anything different, is my point.
I don't know either, if I could predict the future, I'd be rich. I think that, you know, there's two different audiences, that there are people who probably are unaware of what's going on with you guys, and, and didn't know to come out, and when they hear us talking about it, and they see it, they'll be, they might be more apt to find out what's going on and have an opinion either way. So I don't, I understand, I do understand what you're saying.
Right.
But I think also that the council as a whole needs to read this thing and, and understand it, and come back, and come back to the council with, with full support, or quite, whatever it may be, questions, because there is, I mean, when you look at the, the red and the blue, there's a, there's a lot, there's a lot of, a lot of things eliminated, and a lot of things changed. And there's, you know, there's, there's, there's places in it where there's, you know, one sentence that changes a lot. And, and so you just, I think, you know, everyone has to have an understanding, it's not just a, well, I mean, people can do anything they want to, but, you know, I think a, a good reading of it and understanding it, and then having a discussion about it, either post-public hearing or pre-public hearing is, is crucial for us. So, Rich, did you want to ask?
Yes. Bob, you went to.
Bob, you went to Glastonbury and Newington and so forth, I remember going with you. Have you followed up with any of those town managers about a referendum if it failed in those towns?
Madison, Connecticut, I did. I can't, Newtown, Connecticut, we talked to her on the phone at one of our meetings. You know, you could look right next door, Stonington. Okay, just go right there and ask, you know, Rob Simmons, how do you do it every year? The last five years, it's passed on the first vote. And since 2009, it's passed in the first vote except one year where it took two. So if we want to learn how to do that, just go next door and ask, you know, how do you make a budget pass? They know how.
Was there?
I just wanted to add something to Dean's question, but I think Bob would know better. We spoke with a woman from Newtown, who they have a straight budget referendum, every year their taxes go up under 2%. Isn't, wasn't that what she said? They increase, but they increase at a reasonable rate. So I think Bob had or has all that data.
I don't have it with me, but, you know.
I mean, one of the things that, interesting, Jen, that you said, you know, that you, you don't want to put that ceiling in, the two, you know, the trigger, because, because you think that there's a possibility that the, that the council or the board of finance, whomever, would go right to the tip of that and, and, and just stay right under it. And to me, that's a, to me, it's a damning statement, because you're changing everything to make it so that it's a well-oiled machine, you know, that you're, you're, you know, you're, you have this board of finance, seven people, that you're trusting the whole budget to, and then you're giving it, then you're passing it over to the nine-person council, and you're concerned that those 16 people are going to trick you and always go to the top before. So to me, that, that's a flaw, to me, and it's just a flaw. It seems like it's, it's your, I mean, if, if you're that concerned about the process that you put into place, just going right beneath that ceiling so that they, because there could be trickery involved, and you don't trust how they're going to do it, that, that, that to me seems like, like the process is flawed.
It's actually, it's not that, like, so I didn't, I didn't want a referendum, but when we were developing like how the referendum would act, I believe zero is correct. To me, like, if you do not have a referendum, I actually put more faith in the board and board of, the council and the board of finance, because as trusted officials, we, as the citizens of Groton, voted you in, and we should trust you to make that appropriate decision. The concern was, you know, obviously, we're in a team, so we needed to do what was like, what the committee looked at. So the committee said referendum, right, and we voted on that. We took several votes on that. And so referendum it is, and in my perspective, if you're going to do like either 2% or 0%, I would rather just go with zero, because then there is no artificial, let's play this game, you know? And granted, with the transition from the RTM to the board of finance, guarantee first two years, you know, it's going to be rough until people get the hang of it, and then I guarantee it will be a more efficient, well-oiled machine going forward with people in the finance. Hopefully, we get people who are in finance, who are volunteering for these roles or running for these roles, so that we can not only just look at expenses, but look at future revenue for the town, anticipating how we can generate more revenue for the town. So that's really the role of the board of finance.
Okay. Patrice?
Thank you. The issues you're raising, we, we have gone over so many times in so much depth and have done so much research on. So I highly recommend you guys go back in and look at the minutes, because we, I'm assured none of us can pull off the top of our head all the research that we've done, so I highly recommend that. The second thing, just, just the, the argument that any number that would turn out for a referendum is better than 41, it's 41 by the way, RTM members voting is flawed, because 41 members represent each district in town. Every district is guaranteed a voice, and you will not necessarily have that if you have a budget referendum.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, just one of them, with the, the way we have the referendum every year, it's third Tuesday in May, every year, and it gets institutionalized. It's not like, well, if it's over 2.5%, we have a referendum maybe every four years, every three years. This is every year, people know, third Tuesday in May, I go and vote on the town budget. You know, you, you do your civic duty, and you get up to speed on the budget to some degree, so you vote intelligently. But it becomes part of our way of life here.
Okay.
The, oh, gosh, I lost my train of thought. The, the one thing I do remember is that when we talked about implementing a board of finance, we talked a lot about it, how it was going to work, how much teeth it would have. The only thing to what Patrice said, the only thing that I do not agree with that it is at large, I would like the seven-member board of finance to be elected from each district. And I still can't remember what the other thing I was going to say.
Dean?
The only thing that I can say is Jane and I were both on that committee. I don't envy you when you get the budget. It is a hard decision to make, and you sit on what you think is best, and you're told by the town managers, department heads and everything, what they think. Then you've got to go and weigh it and decide what to do. So I guarantee that they had a full scope of what goes on in the operation.
Bonnie?
I just want to say to Patrice, it's the 41 RTM members that being from each, representing each district, the public that comes out has every right to represent each district. If they don't come to the poll, shame on them.
That's what I was going to say, Bonnie. No one's disputing the right of the public to speak, okay?
But, I mean, in the RTM, there are, there were people that didn't go to any meetings, and so they were representing no one.
And, and look, you have empty seats. So you can't be too critical.
Okay, well, thank you guys for coming tonight, and I think that we will have a, we will, this won't be the last we all get together, and we will, I think we need to make sure that all the council members have a copy of the draft.
And the minority reports?
And the minority reports, yep, that was all sent to us via email.
Well, we have.
One of the things that might be useful is the list of motions. That might be very, very useful to you when you're reading.
Okay. Is it possible, John, that maybe somebody in the office could put together the?
It might be with it, Patrice.
It's on the website.
I thought it was all going together.
If you go to the town's website on, in the upper left, it has the links to the minority report, the draft, the motions, the town council considerations.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other thing I could ask, if you do come up with questions, could you get those to us ahead of time so we can have a heads up?
You're doing a great job, you know, just off the, because you've lived it for almost months.
So, again, I got one question. So, you know, we do deliberate and we all talk and make recommendations for changes. Does it go back to you guys, or do we make the change and then push it forward?
We're done.
You make your recommendations to us.
Right, you're done.
We, we can take your recommendations and implement some, all, or none, and we give it back to you, and you decide what goes on the ballot.
We either accept or reject it.
Pardon?
We either accept or reject it.
Yeah, or you could put some on, you could somehow put some on the ballot. As Patrice said, I wouldn't recommend that, but you decide what goes on the ballot.
Yeah.
It's kind of in your court now.
Yeah. Well, almost, right? I mean, it goes back to you guys once and then?
Once you accept it, we're done. We're, we're in business.
We've transmitted it to you, so now it's in your hands. You guys have to do something with it.
Right, right. But we're not accepting or rejecting it yet. We're, we may ask you to look at a few things and, and then it will come back to us for a final.
Dean?
No, just going to say, this is going back to what Patrice said before, which is, you have to be careful how you package it, because can you imagine if you ask people the questions and people said, no, I don't want to get rid of the RTM, but I like the board of finance, I thought we have an RTM and a board of finance.
Exactly.
Yeah, so that's.
But you could have a question like, you know, do you want the, I mean, I know this isn't worded properly, but do you want the town to vote on the, vote per, by referendum on the budget? If, if yes, do you want there to be a trigger? Like, do you want it, do you want it to kick in at a certain percentage? I'm not saying I want that, I'm just telling you that you could.
That's a late in here.
No, we have to, we have to write it the way we want it and get that to go back to hell.
No, they don't have to agree. It's the way we write it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Are you going to give it a legal, uh, legal brush?
Absolutely. Well, I'm assuming you guys didn't.
No, we didn't.
Oh, yeah.
I think we asked like one question, and it was pricey, so we said, we'll leave it for you guys, and you guys can decide, do what you want with it.
Okay.
So why spend the money if you weren't going to take it?
I still, I still have that one question about.
Harry's a question, then, Bonnie?
No, I'm just trying to get. I was wondering, all this, I just looked on our website, all the stuff's on our website. You know, men, the minority report, all the stuff's right, right on our website. I was wondering how town council considerations got put up there, because I don't remember us ever voting on something. And to put something up, it was just suggestions kind of willy-nilly from all, if different ones of us. How did that get up on our website?
It just came to the package of everything that came in was asked to be put up.
But it's not something we acted on. Put it on the website, kind of suggests that we acted on something.
Well, those are the recommendations that you had, you know.
But we didn't vote on those.
Well, I don't know.
It's a list of what you wanted us to look at.
Yeah.
That's all it was.
Concerns. It was, it was given to us at the very start of our process, and it became part of our minutes, therefore, it's part of the public record now. And they came in many different forms, because you all, you all kind of chipped in, not all as one. You all kind of gave us what your concerns were, and that's the way we received it and therefore became part of our proceeding. So now it's part of the public record.
All right. Rich?
Yeah, I'm just disappointed the fact that we, we hadn't reached an agreement on the people who pay, pay high, property taxes but can't vote. And I know that the town attorney made a, a ruling on it, but they also made rulings in the past in favor of it. So it's like, it's like cafeteria, pick and choose. I, I think we need to get an additional attorney.
Well, there's, there is background to it. I don't know if Patrice, you want to?
That was the opinion that we got. That's the one thing that we sent to the attorney, because we had, we had a very, a very loyal follower who, Mrs. Adams, came to almost all of our meetings, and that was her issue that she, she was advocating for. And so we sent that one to the town attorney. But as I was saying, we decided to hold off on sending anything else to the attorney because we didn't know whether you would accept the whole report, because there's a lot in there that's going to have to be looked at by a lawyer. I mean, we didn't want to spend money on it with us and then have you guys go and spend money again. So we just, we sent that one question, and the attorney said, no, you can't, and we said, okay, then we left that.
But that same attorney's firm said yes in the past, so I don't, I don't agree with that answer.
Right, right. But that's what, that's the opinion we got from the attorney, the town attorney, most recently.
I think people who pay high taxes should have the right to vote in a referendum issue.
Was there?
I just want to, I think I sent you all an email about this a while back. If you could just research the cost of that town attorney opinion, I think it was over $2,000 through one page, and just check into it, see if you think it's reasonable or not.
Okay. Will do.
So, John, would you, as far as the, the version that we got, can we get it into the hands of, of the attorneys? Now, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's going to have to be looked at, and I, the longer we wait, the deeper we're going to get into something that we may have to change.
Didn't you suggest at the beginning of this process that we use attorney that's not the town attorney?
I did. I did.
Somebody else.
Dean?
Yeah, I was going to say, with respect to the bill for the, the opinion, I wouldn't go by page length, because a lot of my work, for example, where I spend hours boils down to three pages. If somebody were to look at three pages and go, wow, it's just three pages of text. Oh, but what I went through to get there. Okay. What I would want to know is, I don't know whether we have a bill from the attorney with any detail in it, because at $2,000, that's quite a few hours at the rate that, I think the charge is $149 an hour.
You figured it was 19 hours.
Right, so what did they, if it's 19 hours, what was the 19 hours spent on? If it was just 19 hours to look, to answer questions?
They answered one of four questions.
I understand. So I don't know whether we have a bill that, that lays it out.
I had asked a question to them to see if Eileen could, could piece it out, and I've not got a response from her yet.
Okay.
I'll check on it.
I mean, I know they got a department there that handles the, the accounting and the book.
So, was there, we did inquire? We're waiting, he's waiting for an answer. Okay.
Thank you.
Males. Karen?
Do you think it's premature to send the finished draft from the CRC to the attorney now to look at before we've decided? I mean, it seems there's still, we've got to look it over, we've got to make decisions on if there's, that's something we would like them, to ask them to change. They may or may not change it. So theoretically, there could be changes. I, I'm just thinking that we don't get the town attorney involved until we have the finished product, and we know this is what's going.
Well, I think my, my concern is kind of the opposite, that we, that we support something that, and send it forward, and the town attorney says, stop, there's something that has to be changed. So that's, that's, it's to get a, it's to me to get a, an update on what's been presented to go, to move forward. Because if they say, this does work, this doesn't work, or this, you know what I mean? Like, then our decision may be moved, but.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like their opinion sort of as we go. I'd like the attorney to look at it, so maybe they'll bring up something we hadn't thought of before.
Great.
I would only like their opinion if we are under the consensus that we're sort of for this, and, you know, if, if there's a majority of people that don't want this, then it's silly to get their opinion.
And spend money.
I think it's, what do you think, John? I think I.
That's right, blame the you guys.
I mean, I'm for getting their opinion, because I'm for, you know, most of the, or not, if not all of the things that's in there.
My feeling is the, just from what I've heard, most council members want to do something, so we might as well get an opinion on it.
Yeah.
I'll also ask for a second opinion on, on Rich's question, if that's okay from a?
With a different attorney.
With a different attorney, different firm.
Different firm.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll see you Saturday morning, Bob. Yeah, 3:30.
Consideration of committee referral items per town council referral list? Is anything listed?
With the, yeah, the liaison.
Much better than 00.
Oh, I'm sorry. 2017 0205 Board of Education, City of Groton Liaison. So looking to appoint somebody.
I'll volunteer for the education.
Okay. Bonnie, who is it?
Well, Greg had brought up that he thinks that we should wait until after the election.
I mean, by the time you get someone appointed and go to one meeting, you're going to have different people.
I mean, he might appoint two people that aren't even elected, and then they got to get all up to speed again.
Yeah, but if there's only one meeting between now and when they, they're not going to miss anything.
Well, I'm, you know.
Be optimistic, Bonnie.
Harry, you going to say something?
Yeah, the word liaison jumped out at me, because we do have a, a liaison committee that, I mean, if, the other thing, sometimes these things should be two-way streets, too. You know, to, so you send somebody to, you know, to the city council, maybe we ought to say we're going to do this, you know, why don't you guys send somebody over here too, at our meetings, too? I, I think it warrants a fair amount of discussion. And I also, you know, we're, there'd be one meeting that they would go to. I think, you know, I mean, that just, maybe it ought to wait until the next council. It's a good idea, but I'm not sure this late in the game for this council is the right It's a good idea, but I'm not sure this late in the game for this council is the right thing to be doing right now.
Bonnie, and then John.
I think that these meetings are important, in, like, Diane and I are on the EDC, but why don't we make a sign up, and we all rotate? Because it would be a good thing for all of us to go to some of those meetings.
Or whoever's.
And then just, you know, if you can make it that night, you sign up, and maybe one person ends up going to a lot more of them than others, but...
That's a good idea.
Yeah. John?
I was just going to say, I have been talking with Mayor Hendrick about doing a reverse liaison, and he's very open to the idea, and, and then I also spoke with your wife about it, too, for the Board of Ed, and she's very open to it. I like the idea of rotating.
She didn't tell me, I mean, that's okay.
And I will mention that, you know, where I was previously, you know, we didn't always have great communication between municipal liaison, we did this, and it was a huge step forward. So I definitely think it's something needed, whether it's rotating or whatever else, I definitely want to see it go.
And I don't think it necessarily has to be a liaison. You know, I've gone to, I haven't gone to any Board of Ed meetings, but I have gone to a city of Groton meeting, and they're open to all of us, so, but we could cover it by making sure somebody's there. But what I don't necessarily think we have to sign...
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's nice to have an official, like, have it be an official thing that, you know, just coming to sit in the audience, but you're, you know, you're, you have an official title, for lack of a better word.
I was just going to mention, you know, usually what you'd see is that that council or group would have a slot right on their agenda for always getting an update from the town council, and, you know, and we'd want to do it by, you know, reverse, too. We'd want a slot for the Board of Ed, and we'd want a slot for the city to give a couple of quick words of update, also, besides bringing our information back.
That's, that's what we do at the EDC.
It has it worked out?
It worked, it works out great. Groton Utilities is on, got a liaison, the GBA, and the town council.
All right, there you go. Dean?
Why, why single out the city of Groton? Why not have Groton Long Point as well?
It's also a subdivision.
I didn't want to mention that.
I know.
But I, but I think it should be.
I mean, I, I mean...
It's a subdivision.
I mean, theoretically, it should be no different.
That's right.
Go to an association meeting, and frankly, it was the last time anyone else did that.
Is it an association? Joke, 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 joke.
Harry?
Before we leave, we got to get, make sure we have a volunteer for this one opportunity between now and the election. Do we have somebody that's volunteering to go to one of these?
Well, Rich probably does volunteer.
I'm trying to make that official, Rich, I mean, I know you said that, but...
Yeah. I mean, is it, and it's, we should figure it out, too. I mean, you know, it's an idea, you know, it's not, obviously, it's a, a free discussion, but the, you know, the Groton City, they meet every week, so it's a, it's a big, a big, you know, it's a big piece of pie, you know? And... Harry?
Yeah, but the liaison committee between the Board of Ed, the RTM, all of us, yeah, yeah, was meant to be that, and, and it's informal, which this probably would be, too. It's a communication tool to kind of, sometimes, in some cases, stop rumors. I can remember last year, the liaison meeting itself, somebody from the city council coming to our liaison meeting and finding out what the referendum for the 2020 thing was really all about, really all about, and took it back to the city council, so on.
It says the city, they're, holds their meeting on the third Monday of the month, City Council.
It's only once a month for their, their city meetings.
This, well, the city meets, I mean, they need...
It's community, the whole, I think.
Yeah, they have...
Their official meeting though is once a month.
I see.
Lisa called and double-checked, yeah.
Like ours.
Okay. Yeah, Greg?
So I think you were talking about a specific liaison meeting. We're, we're talking about...
A liaison, no, I know.
Sending someone to different meetings, which then maybe you don't need to have that meeting.
Well, that was going to be, but it's, that, that meeting is a creation of the Board of Ed, so that needs to come up through the Board of Ed, if they want to get rid of it or not.
So, Rich, you'll go this month?
Yeah, just as soon as I see you.
And then we'll figure it out after the election, and we'll see who's left.
There you go.
Are you, what meeting are you going to?
Board of Ed. Board of Education.
What about the city?
Does anybody want to volunteer to go to the city?
I'll do it.
There you go. There you go. That's what I was looking for.
It's Wednesday, first Wednesday of the month.
What time, what time is that?
7 o'clock.
Third Monday of the month. I'll, I'll go to that one.
There you go, you got it.
First Wednesday?
Thanks, everybody.
The first Wednesday of the month.
At 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock.
At Rich's house.
Anybody else? Move on to consideration of committee referral items? We don't have any? Greg?
Were we going to call the Groton Salem Committee in front of you?
Yeah, we've been, we, John has invited them, they haven't had, they haven't been able to figure out a date. Yeah.
Is this for new referrals? Or is that other business?
It's other business.
Yeah.
You can't make a referral and leave. Go ahead, Greg. Other business.
Other business? Yeah, I'd like to bring back to the table for discussion the ethics policy and all the work that Council Antipas has done, and revisit whether we potentially might want to enact some kind of ethics policy.
Dean?
I'm not opposed to it. It's not that I want to see my, you know, my baby enshrined in law or anything like that, it's that, because that's always fun. But the question is, we, we've discussed the utility of it, but I don't think that we put it to bed forever. As I've told people, look, we'll, if the council thinks it's appropriate, we'll, you know, we'll bring it up again. So I'm not opposed to talking about it.
I think that if we're, I, I have no problem, I think it's a good idea to have something in place. I just don't think we should recreate the wheel, and I think that's what we tried to do. I think that we tried to take everything that we, of every ethics policy we've ever known, put it in and figure out what we, what we did and didn't want.
No, I did that. You took stuff out.
Yeah, you put it in, I run it out.
Whenever adjudicating.
But I think that if we're, it, it became a, to me, it became unmanageable, it was too, and we need to find an ethics policy from a community that we can more easily make our own.
Can I just, you know, have a little time, and I'll review it and look at what others have done, and maybe come back with some recommendations? I do feel that we, and I've seen some places that have some simple ones, in Connecticut, that, you know, are a couple of pages, and I'm not sure we have to do too heavy, but I think if it's in the charter, we should probably have.
Well, the reason why it's a large document is because the, the charter directed us, the current charter directs us to form an ethics commission. The proposed code, the draft code, not only formed the commission, it also laid out what is unethical, described as best as possible, and also laid out procedures, so sort of a three-part deal. So, you know, it was, it made it, it made it a large piece of, large piece of legislation, but...
Yeah, Greg?
Got one more. I'd like to see when we have the lawyers come to our meetings for various discussions, if those happen, like, at the beginning? Because I'm concerned when I see them sitting out there for three or four hours waiting for us to get to them.
Since I've been here, that's what we've been doing, is having them in the beginning. So I've been trying to get them...
That hasn't happened, you know?
We've only had them, like, twice since I've been here. I've, yeah, I haven't kind of been in love with that, and yet, that's always my intention.
All right, thanks.
You know, on, on that issue with the lawyers, I'd like to see the, the department manager talk rather than the lawyer, in some cases. Now, if there's, if there's a problem where the lawyer has to explain it in legal terms, fine, but if it's a normal, routine situation, I think the department manager should do it, and the lawyer doesn't have to be present.
And one thing I've asked, correct the name of the committee, one thing I've asked, though, is that we update the board rules to allow for, you know, we have on the council, where I can give an update, Betsy gives an update, I'd like to have a slot right in there for department heads, as well as, you know, we can do it here, too, but lots of options. I'd like to start working in generally, department head updates, and you, lots of chances to ask questions along the way on things, too, that are coming along.
Dan?
I would like to know what the status is on combining the dispatch. Have you, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report, just because the first step is, well, yeah, the communications, the...
Weren't they working on what it was going to cost and what, what they needed to buy?
Well, we have to go up for our, you have to, the CAT system, we know about what that would cost, the CAT RMS, you know, a little over $300,000. But then you also have to do the police radio communications, which is anywhere from $1 to $1.5 million. You need to really, though, because it's so technically complex, you have to put out RFP and gather bids from different people on how they would fix it. They need to come in and analyze, and that's, you don't spend a million, million, half of that without quite a bit of process to it.
This is the first time I heard those kind of figures. Just to become the same frequency.
No, it's our, our spottiness on the, our system is part of the whole thing, too, our...
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Gaps in our system on, and it's not just the communications between the radios, it's also generally been able to speak across the, the whole town.
Dead zones.
Dead zones, yeah.
It's our own upgrade.
So, so it would be an upgrade as opposed to just combining? It would be a total redo?
Well, just internally, regardless of, we need these changes regardless of whether we combine or not, and I think we're a ways off from the city wanting to combine. I think we need to just sit down and have them talk through all our options on where we can all cost share, combine one way or another. I just know that there's a couple obstacles before you could look at combining. And we did have a study, by the way, on what it would essentially cost generally to operate as a combined, there is that study out there, you know, what it's costing separately versus running it combined. But there's some system changes needed before you could do that.
Greg, any more of the controls?
No.
Bill?
Move away, Charlie.
Second? Richard?